All right, good evening. Wow. New microphones, okay. Welcome. Good evening, good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Kansas City Public School Board. This is our Board Policy Monitoring Meeting for January 12th, and we'll call the meeting to order. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Present.
Ms. Buckner, here. Ms. Cortez? Ms. Ford? Here. Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Wolsey?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
So moved.
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. All right. Normally, we would do a review of the old action items. I'm gonna need you guys to... No. We don't have any action items. They've all been cleaned up and presented to the board, so thank you for that. So we'll skip right on by that one. And move over to our regular business items. So Dr. Bedell, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are seeking, or we are asking the Board to approve the agreement between KCPS and Crossroads Charter School for KCPS to serve as the charter school's new sponsor. This transfer in sponsorship is due to the University of Central Missouri making the decision that it will no longer sponsor charter schools. Crossroads is one of the seven schools sponsored by UCM. The sponsorship of Crossroads would not pose a fiscal hardship on KCPS. We have Ms. Sharnissa Holliday Scott here today if there are any questions of the Board.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Any questions, Mr. Abarka? I just want to say thank you for your hard work on this. This is an incredible opportunity. That might have been the briefest comments from our treasurer ever. And we appreciate that. Any other questions? Yeah, Ms. Ford?
I just want... Are you able to just like high level, I think it's good for the public to understand what sponsorship is really about? So are you able to kind of share so everybody's on the same page about what it is we're about to approve?
Yes. And thank you for that question and to be able to share with our public. As a sponsor of a charter school, we are an approved sponsor. KCPS has been an approved sponsor since 2015. Some of the key responsibilities that we must do is we are responsible for providing oversight to charter schools that are sponsored under us regarding the compliance. We must ensure that they follow federal and state guidelines that are applicable to them. We also negotiate contracts with them, and that is to ensure that everyone knows where each other stands. What is the position of the district? What's the position of the charter school? And how we will go about evaluating them as well as oversight. And the third key item we must be responsible for is we do evaluate compliance. We monitor their compliance. We also inform intervention decisions as well as renewal decisions. And we also ensure their autonomy. So we are responsible, just like any other approved sponsor, we must do those things.
It also allows us to do some of the work from an ed collaboration perspective. Not that we couldn't do that without being a sponsor, but it certainly makes it a bit more organic, wouldn't you say?
Absolutely. And that is one of the pluses about the school district being a sponsor. Most people do not know, but across the country, over 90% of all charter schools are actually authorized or sponsored by the local school district. And part of that is to allow for the opportunity to collaborate. Also, the opportunity for us to be able to look at what each other is offering and to be able to build on that to make sure our education community is best fitting for our families.
Ms. Wolsey?
I don't really have a question, but like Ms. Ford, could you just, for the benefit of the public, make sure people understand the difference between being their sponsor and them being their own LEA, Local Education Agency?
Absolutely. Sponsorship, as I shared the responsibilities, we provide oversight. The charter school, Crossroads, will remain their own LEA, which is Local Education Agency. So that does not make them like another school of Kansas City Public School District. So we do not view them or work with them like we would Central High School or one of our elementary schools. So they are a separate entity. They actually have their own governing board. And so most of my work is actually done with the governing board as well as with the administration. So those are the primarily, primary people that I work with in doing the sponsorship responsibilities. And so for them, when we do sponsorship and evaluation progress, I actually meet with their board and I share with the outcome of the evaluations that we do. So that does make it different. So we do not run them. They have their own governing body. But we must ensure that they are following the law. So that is one of the key responsibilities of a sponsor.
Mr. Abarka? Oh, you're good. Okay, apologies. Any other questions? All right. Well, I'll just say that this is super exciting. Thank you for your work on this, Sharnissa. You just go in with a ton of credibility and authority, and people respect you and what you say and how you're bringing charters and KCPS together, so thank you for your work on that. All right, so no other questions. I move, or is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the charter agreement to serve as, man, I need my glasses, charter school, sponsored a Crossroads charter school, a high-performing charter school? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. This is good stuff, good stuff. All right, Dr. Bedell?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Sharnissa Holliday Scott for your work, a job well done here. I also would like to welcome the charter Crossroads School to our family. There are benefits when we do our Summer Fest, just like we have done with Allen Village because we sponsor them. They are, you know, they will be able to partner with us and be able to set up a tent and take advantage of some of those amenities that we partner with, with many partners across the state. And so we're just excited about this opportunity and just look forward to trying to do what we can in the best interest of children. So thank you all for that. As we move on, under the superintendent's report, we have KCPS accreditation update. Many of you have heard of the news of the district restoring, getting restored back to full accreditation. And the last time that we have on record was 2000. So 22 years later, we are here, and we're excited about that. And I think yesterday, I had a script, didn't follow it. And so I just want to make sure that I just reiterate to some people that I may have missed that our gratitude and our sincere just appreciation for everything that you've done. Our custodians and our bus drivers, I know it's been tough this year with school bus drivers. Our paras, social workers, therapists, psychologists, counselors, all of these other support staff that we have. Nurses, security, I know my guys are in here, and we took care of you all with the last negotiation too. So y'all know we care about y'all. But just a tremendous amount of other support staff that didn't get mentioned yesterday that we have to just once again thank you all for your, for a job well done. The last thing that I will say to this topic is that we are out of this six-foot ditch that we've been trying to climb out of. We're on solid ground. What does that mean for us? We don't have to be on the defensive anymore. We have an opportunity to proceed on the offensive. What you heard yesterday from Dr. Jennifer Collier about our visioning around what we want to do, those are all offensive moves. And they are moves that in some cases will be unprecedented because it will require that we have to get additional support from this community to change legislation and to change statutes so that we can become a true leader around innovation in this state and in this country. And it just gives us that leverage now to also have a level of trust with this community that we know how to do this work. We have a formula, and our goal is to not ever go back to being provisionally accredited or unaccredited. So we're just excited about this future. And I couldn't be more thankful of the support that we've had from this Board of Directors, these cabinet members and executive leaders who are here tonight helping to lead this work. Let's get, let's get moving. That's all I can say. Roll up our sleeves, and we started back with that today. Roll in our sleeves and let's move it forward. So thank you all, everybody, on that. And I know the Board will have some comments when you all get to the Board Chair's report. So where we are now on my report is the COVID-19 update. We want to make sure that we have several slides we need to update the Board on and also the community. When we do these updates, we generally, two or three times a year, will come back to the community and just make sure that we're staying relevant with any changes that may have occurred, whether it's with the CDC or our health departments. So at this time, I will bring up our two individuals in our district, Lauren and Sarah, who will take us through these slides, and then I think Dr. Collier, you'll do it, or actually, Dr. Jackson will do some of the academic slides.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Good evening, Board. Good evening, public. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to give you a quick update on our COVID-19 guidance and to let you know that we are comporting with CDC guidelines as they come out. We got word earlier this week that the guidance is switching. The biggest switch is going from the 10 days of quarantine isolation to five days, which Nurse Grimes will explain in full when she comes up to the podium. Just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of the numbers of staff and student absences that we have across the district now, and that's on your slide that's showing right now. That is updated as of 1/10/22. We have a few more cases out based on our great testing protocols. Unfortunately, they're catching cases as we know that Omicron is on the rampage in Kansas City and elsewhere. So we're just keeping pace, and we know that numbers in the district are going to reflect what's being seen in our community. We are continuing with all of our mitigation strategies as we've had on hand before and then upgrading some of those a bit. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So our contact tracing and isolation and quarantine protocol. Lauren, is this your slide?
So as Sarah said, we moved to five days of isolation and quarantine. What that means is the day of symptoms or positive test, whichever is first, that's day zero. Next day is day one. Day six, they may return. They have to wear a mask, you know, and stay away, which we wear masks anyways. But you just, we just stress how important it is to make sure they keep that mask on and try and keep six feet distancing. So... And then staff, when they come back, we do a rapid and make sure that that rapid is negative before they come back in. So we can go to the next slide. This is just our updated protocol that kind of, it's really the same as what we had except for we changed the tens to fives. You know, that's basically it. And then updated definition of vaccination being that you're boosted or within six months since your last Moderna shot, five months since your last Pfizer, or two months since your Johnson and Johnson. So that's kind of the updates on the terms for vaccination. I think that's it. Next slide. So we are doing the testing, and we are catching a lot of cases. We did our pool testing this week and had quite a lot of positive pools come back. I have talked to the state and asked them to allow us to do individual PCR tests instead of pool testing until we get through this because it is a lot, you know, a lot, pool testing isn't meant for this kind of transmission. So I'm waiting to hear back. Just talked to them today. They expected to have an answer for me today. I didn't get it yet, so I'm hoping for tomorrow. We have, it's still luckily about 2,500, a little less than 2,500 rapid antigen tests on hand. Because we're a big district, we luckily had a lot. Unfortunately, we are going through them very quickly. I know that we're working on, you know, getting some more, but we'll do, we'll do rapid tests as long as we have stock. Once that's gone, I, you know, we obviously can't do it. We have about 1,500 participants in our weekly pool testing. And then we have our follow-up. We do a rapid first. If that pool comes back positive, if we find our positive person with the rapid, that person goes home and we follow our contact tracing procedures and isolation. If we do not find that positive person with the rapid, then we follow up with an individual PCR. So that we do eventually get them. And then we also have about 831 participants in our Chonans Mercy's, which is at eight schools. And they just started symptomatic individual testing at three of our schools. And we hope to expand that, you know, as they, as they can. We're ready for them, so... Next slide, is it still? So we are still contact tracing, doing the best that we can. We have had a lot of cases. We are trying to contact people, so we are still contact tracing. We used to be able to always get back to people, usually that day that we found out, but sometimes it is the next day. We are no longer sending a general notification to the school. It is on our dashboard. Like we just say, there, you know, possible case, like, we need to, everybody needs to know there are cases in every school. Like, there just is. It's just kind of too much to keep up with. But our dashboard is updated as that information comes in. And that's usually at least no more than 24 hours behind, but sometimes not even that. Next slide?
Okay, so masking. I'm wearing a KN94 mask or KF94 mask. It's a high-quality mask. We are strongly encouraging everyone to move to a high-quality mask. It's been recommended by CDC, Dr. Fauci, Dr. Walensky, right? And so if you're gonna, if folks are gonna wear their cloth mask, we're asking that they stick a surgical mask under that mask, and that way you have that added layer protection. There are lots of quality cloth masks, right, that have that filtration built in. So we're just really watching for our students to be having that surgical mask on and the cloth mask or a high-quality mask. Next slide, please.
Hey, just have to cut you off. So...
Sure.
No women bow ties? Probably not that much of a quality of a tie than a face mask, huh?
Which side?
Noblemen, the ones that I wear, the designer ones, probably not, huh?
They're snappy, but I would advise that you put a surgical mask under it.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Okay, so with our vaccine and boosters, you know, CDC and everybody we know on the news that's worth a grain of salt is telling us that it's so important for our, for our staff, students, community to be vaccinated and boosted as soon as possible. I pulled up the latest numbers across the US, kiddos that are 5 to 11. Guess what? We only have a 15% fully vaccinated rate, okay? And I tried to pull the Missouri number, and I couldn't find that dedicated number for 5 to 11-year-olds in Missouri. But generally, we tend to run a little bit behind some of the rest of the country. So that's going to be very critical. So what we're very excited about, as well as that we have 81% of our staff vaccinated. 81% of our staff are fully vaccinated. We're moving forward with boosters. We're giving a little stipend for folks that come into compliance with that by February 18th. We have school vaccination clinics that are rolling out. We have two scheduled now for Gladstone and TruSt. Just wanted to give a shout-out to Andrew Murphy at Carver, who got 136 folks vaccinated between December and January. And that we have more school-based vaccination clinics planned or in the works to be planned, I should say. I don't want to misspeak. As soon as possible, we're partnering with Kansas City Health Department on those, on those clinics. It's continued strategies that we've had before. I always go back to, I always see the Swiss cheese in my mind when I talk about these, which are our social distancing, our frequent hand washing and sanitizing, covering our coughs and sneezes, our ventilation and air filtration at all of our buildings, and our continuous cleaning model that Mr. Oldfield and the custodial crew are doing a fantastic job of. Staff specific update again is that we're moving to a five-day COVID leave rather than, we had been fairly generous past even the FF-CRA Act with COVID leave. So we're now just coming into comportment with that five-day guidance by the CDC for any further COVID leave that would occur after January 18th. The staff update also includes an update of our EAP provider within our materials that are now up on the, up on the website. So if you go to the COVID info tab, you'll see the staff handbook guidance, the family handbook guidance, as well as our COVID-19 contact tracing protocol. Dr. Jackson, do you want to come talk about?
Thank you. All right. Board Chair, Superintendent Board. Happy to share with you about our instructional reminder of our instructional processes and procedures that we have in place currently as we look at this COVID-19. As Sarah tells us often, and I'm surprised we didn't hear it tonight, because we're over the pandemic, doesn't mean the pandemic is over. And so we're constantly in our mode of where are we in our instructional process and this plan that we have and looking at our models. Currently, we have KCVA Academy, the Kansas City Virtual Academy, which is in place. It stood up, still will be in place even if we have to go into alternative medium instruction. About 925 students are engaged in that program now. They're fully virtual 100% of the time currently. Then we have 100% of our students in person. So we're in person, and that's the goal. We know, and we know we're able to pivot very quickly in the years passed into this virtual because we had to. But we also understand that in-person is the best mode of instruction for our students, and we want to do all we can to keep in-person. And so as we look at the data around COVID-19, we'll certainly be very cautious, but we want to be very mindful of the best place for our students to be, which is safe and in our school buildings. So we're gonna do all we can to do what Sarah and Nurse Grimes are telling us to do to mitigate this thing on our campuses. But in case we have to, we're prepared to go 100% into this alternative methods of instruction. And you'll see us shifting our language some here mainly because that is our state-approved plan. It's called the AMI, or the Alternative Methods of, yeah, Alternative Methods of Instruction, formerly known as the Distance Learning Plan. So when you see us say AMI, that is what that's referencing. Yes, and we only get five days. So we have to be very cautious about how we use those days. And the reason why, we want to be very meticulous as we look at our data and when we go into a virtual experience because we only get five instructional days. Anything beyond that, it is, in essence, time lost. We have to make up later on. So we want to be very cautious in that movement to alternative methods of instruction. Again, a reminder of what we talked about early on this school year. Our instructional model for this school year, again, we're gonna keep reminding, our goal 100%. But if we don't get to that space, then we do have some contingency plans in this space. And so as we look at our COVID events currently, there are, in essence, two options here. We have where we're going into whole class, going into a quarantine. When that's the case, the teacher is quarantined along with all of its students, and we do a synchronous experience for our students and for that teacher. That's where the students are engaging with the teacher for four hours online, and the teacher is engaged with planning PLC work, also some office hours in order to get ready for this online learning experience. That's one contingency plan, and that's a subset within a campus. Then you have students who go on quarantine, and that's happening. As we've talked about today, we have several students who are out on quarantine. So what does that look like? Well, that first level is we are making sure our students are still engaged with their teacher, with the classwork that's happening through getting them on the Google Classroom, getting them on Seesaw so that they're not getting behind in their real-time classes. We also have some touchpoints we provided for the students with an adult to talk through and help them with their academic progression while they're away. And so we have the family support teachers. And those individuals are there in order to support those students in helping them with the work that they have in math, ELA, science, social studies, so that they have some support with an adult and they have a touch point while they're away and can get the support they need there. Data and science are the things we come to the table with. Because this can be sometimes an emotional conversation. We gotta look at the data, we look at the science. And so one piece, that piece we're looking at is certainly what are our COVID numbers for our students and our staff? But also, another thing we're looking at is what is our, what are our staffing absences? And so we have collected daily the number of people who are out to see if we reach a critical mass. And at this point, we have had a pretty average absentee rate. Nothing has been alarming. And so as we continue to look at the data and the science of this, we're gonna, that'll make some determinations about what are our next steps for us. When it comes to the science side of this, we hear from our COVID response team that it has to be substantive and sustained COVID experiences or outbreak in order for us to close down a building. What that looks like, I'll lean on our experts to tell us what that is, but that's the science to what we're doing. So we're continuing to keep an eye on all those pieces as we move forward. So I mentioned the AMI day a little earlier, Alternative Methods of Instruction. Here's what that day looks like in general. There are seven-hour workday for our teachers, and there are four hours of instruction for students. Then we go into one hour of uninterrupted planned time. There's also an hour of duty-free lunch, 30 minutes of professional learning communities. And then there is 30 minutes of office hours where the teachers get a chance to work with, make phone calls, and those kind of things during that 30-minute time. We'll pause for questions at this point.
All right, thank you, team. Yeah, I was actually going to go to you first, Ms. Cortez, because I know there's one question that we talked about, that Dr. Bedell and you and I talked about that wasn't answered tonight. So, Ms. Cortez?
I hope I don't ask the wrong question. The AMI day, is that, does that have to be, is that five days per student per year? Or is that five days, how is that measured?
That is district-wide. So that's five days for our district. When a student goes on quarantine, that's not an AMI. And so individual student going on quarantine, we have a different attendance method that the state has approved for that, which allows for us to give a cue for that student. When they do a touch point with that teacher, we now can change that to an H, which gives us an active attendance for that student. So that is not, the AMI is when we have to do it as a district-wide.
Okay, 'cause I'm like trying to put on Ms. Quinley's hat.
Sure. Yes, and she's at the table, believe me.
Yeah, Dr. Jones?
Thank you for clarifying a lot of this information I know people have been wondering about. I just had a simple question. Will it be uniform? I know in previous distance learning things, sometimes there were different apps that people were using different platforms. It was Teams, and then the Google, and then the Google, you know, Seesaw, all of that. Is there a plan this time to maybe make that more standardized across so that parents have fewer places that they have to go to to navigate that?
Great question. There are, there are two district-approved when it comes to video experiences for students. One being Team, and then the other being Google Class, or the Google Meets. The Google Meets really is more for that older group who's involved in that Google Classroom experience, which is just a touch of a point, touch of button within the Google Classroom in order to get access to that. Teams is really our district-wide meeting tool that most of our younger people will be engaged with in that process. And then when it comes to the learning management system, it's gonna be that Google Classroom for our, really our 3 through 12. And then the K2 really focuses on that Seesaw. It's more of an Apple iPad kind of experience for them.
Mr. Abarka?
Okay, thank you all. I've got a few, but I want to start with broadly. Can you all tell us and the public specifically? Can you all tell us and the public specifically how this wave is different than when we shut down, right? Because I think that triggers in some folks' minds an awareness and understanding as to why we're not closing, why we're not, why we're adjusting the way that we are.
Sure, Board Member Abarka, part of it is the fact that in March 2020, when the decision was made to close, we had nothing. We had no resources. We had no idea where to go or how to keep our students, staff, family, and community safe. Now we do. We have those tools in place. We have vaccination, 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 boosters, 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 testing, air filtration, all the things we need to do to run a school district at a high level. And so we're cautious about the state that we're in. We have our eyes wide open, looking to make sure and working very closely with our Health Department to make sure we're not reaching those points of sustained and substantial transmission, substantial and sustained transmission, which they will let us know when we have reached that level. I cannot tell you right now, like we did with data dashboards before, that oh, it's at a 10% level, or oh, it's at a 3% level, or what that is. The Health Department will let us know. We are relying heavily on our community health partners to guide us through the medical piece. So that's the biggest difference, Mr. Abarka, is that we have vaccine now. So now we just need folks to roll up their sleeve and get it.
Thank you for that. I think that is a good foundation before I go into some of these oversight components, and kudos to you all for all this, everyone really, because I think this is very different than we had to make the hard decision to close. But I just want to ask a couple questions and follow-up to some of your presentation here. You know, it seems like a majority of exposures have been kind of in the elementary area, right? So how was the unvaccinated population of our students being impacted differently in this, right? Because that, you know, I think high school, middle school, they have access to a vaccination, whether they do it or not, but you know, for our kiddos who can't get a vaccination at this point, are there greater concerns there versus the other elements of our system?
The CDC guidance still has been that they're seeing a lower transmission rate still in our younger population, although that tends to be ticking up. We're watching it very closely. Vaccine is now available for five and up, so we highly encourage, strongly recommend that folks take advantage of that for their kiddos, because that's what's going to keep us open. The other thing is that what we're seeing more than anything else is high numbers when we come back from breaks, okay? So we're not seeing that sustained and substantial transmission within the school walls as much as we are when folks come back. So what can help us, help our staff and community more than anything else, is for people to do exactly what we're doing right now all the time. If folks can mask in their private lives as well as they do at school, that would help us tremendously to move forward so we can be sure that we're keeping kids in school.
Thank you for that. One more on this component, then I'll give it back, because I've got a couple more, but I'll send them to you if we don't get to them. On the staffing side, I think this is an important discussion that, I don't know if it's Jordan or whoever at this point, but the five days that we cover, right? I've watched my other half, a middle school counselor, have to be quarantined three times in the last five weeks, six weeks. And the reality of what our systems are doing, our educational systems are doing, for parents especially, becomes challenging. So I hope that we're monitoring, I think, those individuals, not just with kiddos, but you know, with other impacts to them being exposed, right? Because I think the five days can be restrictive, and it becomes very challenging for our staff. And similarly with nurses, right? How are we, how are our nurses? Because I feel like there's a lot being placed on them that otherwise is not usually this rambunctious in a school year.
Well, I can take the first part, and then I would love for Nurse Grimes to come up and address how, what rock stars her nurses have been for us. You know, it's to make that decision to go down to the five days of COVID leave, it really becomes a question of this. I think we've done a really good job of supporting all of our staff through this very difficult time of what's unknown, right? And so we've also offered stipend, and we've offered other things to keep people as safe as possible. So if folks get to that time and they need to take leave because they're isolated or quarantined, we have one avenue, which is COVID leave. We also have another avenue, which is PTO. And as you know, Kansas City Public Schools has a very generous PTO policy. So I feel like we've covered our staff very well in those regards.
Before Nurse Ryan comes and pouts for our nurses, which are doing a great work, I do want to commend our faculty and staff. As we look at these numbers, and we're going into schools as assistant suits for school leadership, and we're seeing principals and teachers and other support staff who are stepping up and really being champions for students in these classrooms by subbing, they're going in, and they're covering, and to make sure the students still get a quality experience even in this very volatile season that we're in. And so it's amazing to watch our heroes, as I'll call them, doing the great work that they're doing without complaining. Some situations I don't even know about until I walk into the space. And they're like, we're having 15 people out, two of those are administrators, but we got it covered. We have systems in place, students are in the right place, there are no challenges. So to see that just warms my heart, one, but it's a reminder of the great leaders and the great teachers that we have across our district.
And it doesn't hurt that you all also approved for us to increase the pay, you know, that they have to surrender their planning time and some cases possibly lunch, you know? I don't know if that's the case, but I saw like an hour and a half, 90 minutes. I'm like, is that lunch, too? Oh, block schedule, okay. I was like, man, so how they eating? Okay, anyhow, thank you all, because this, I just sent this information to two different superintendents, superintendent in St. Paul, Minneapolis, and also the Columbia School District Superintendent around what you all had approved for us in increasing to really show our appreciation to our teachers. So we think this is the best practice that some other districts will take on, knowing that it's a struggle to get the substitute fill rates pretty much any higher than 50% in most of our school districts around the country.
Ms. Grimes.
One other thing I want to mention in that world of support, I'm sorry, just jumping in here because I'm excited, our BOE staff is also going out and supporting. I don't want to neglect them because they're going in, subbing, our curriculum folks subbing for teachers. Some of us who have administrative licenses are going in and subbing for principals and assistant principals, and so all of the staff at BOE are also going out and supporting in this effort.
Yeah, we heard you taught math at Banneker multiple periods, so yeah, yep.
Mask is all of a sudden in my ear, just in the whole net. So thank you for asking about the nurses. I will tell you, they are all very stressed. They are working very hard to keep the schools open, keep the students safe, keep the staff safe. Their number one priority is to keep everybody healthy. They, they're stressed. We all are, everybody is. I don't think there is a group in the school district that's not. But they understand the importance of their job, and they're really working hard to make sure we keep our testing programs going and educating families about what signs to look for when they have COVID, and you know, what they can do. And so we're running. We're running. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. So on the slide that has the dashboard, I don't know which one of you to ask this to, but so this, if my notes are correct, you're saying roughly within 24 hours after you learning about either a student or a staff member, that these numbers are being updated.
That you have what, I'm sorry?
That they are being updated. Within 24 hours?
The dashboard is being updated and contacts are being contacted.
Okay.
We really, really, really try and get those contacts that same day. But sometimes a case comes in.
Yep.
Too late.
End of the day.
Yes.
Totally understand that. One of the reasons, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, like, there has been a sentiment expressed to me that they think these are underrepresenting, and I'm trying to get to why they think that may be. And I'm wondering, could you explain why maybe that? I'm not saying that is the case, but I'm wondering why people might state that.
That I'm sorry, it's being under-reported?
Yeah.
And so I look at this, I do, I look at this, and I know we put up everything we learn about.
Okay, and that's what I thought, is like, if you don't know about it, it can't show up because you don't have ESP, correct? Okay. I just wanted to double-check.
Yeah, so anything that's not reported is.
Yes.
We haven't learned about it.
So any anecdotal.
They're only going to be in the student realm.
Yeah.
Because staff reports it to HR that they're out, and so in the students, it's up if the parents tell us or not.
Okay, and that's, I think that's important for us to maybe communicate to our families is how important that is for us to know, just so that this can maybe really reflect, because I assume that this also helps with the sustained and substantive decision, and that it just goes to people being confident that they can trust this information and be a part of like, okay, they're doing, and it matches what I know. And so I just, I applaud all the efforts. I was just trying to kind of get to the bottom of that. I really appreciate that.
Okay, I think I'm going to round this out real quick. So super quick questions, and I think Ms. Williams, you might have answered this, and I didn't quite comprehend it. Do we know what our positivity rate is overall? And the reason, before you answer, Ms. Grimes, the reason I ask is sort of in my personal life, or professional, other professional life, we're seeing positivity rates upwards of 35%. I mean, it's significantly different than it was with even the Delta variant, right? Where it was 15, 18%. Are we seeing something similar?
Do you mean in our testing programs or just overall?
Uh, that is a good question.
Because we don't know about, like I said, as I said, there's a lot of cases we don't know about, so positivity over the course of the district, I don't know. Just because we don't have all the information. I mean, we know there's a lot of kids out there with COVID that we never found out about, but in our testing program.
Right.
So unfortunately, right now, I don't have a good number for you, because last week, we didn't do all the testing because of Monday, there were no kids, and so they didn't do testing. And we just started this week. But I do know, and this is the bad thing, I don't know how many pools we do because it varies week to week, school to school. If there's some kids out, we don't have as many, or staff out, we don't have as many pools. But I do know we had over 50 pools today that came back positive. And in our, so that means there's at least 50. There could be more than one in a pool that's positive, but. And in our Children's Mercy, I've definitely seen an uptick, but I don't know the exact percentage. I just didn't.
Okay, I think it'd be good for us to get exposure to, like, what is the average positivity rate maybe week over week? And seeing, are we going up? Are we going down? Is it maintaining steady, et cetera?
Oh, sorry. It's hard to, it's hard to gauge right now. We came back with a surge from the holiday, and I feel like compared to last week, it's down a little bit this week, and I do have those numbers, but I didn't compare the weeks. I kind of only looked at the since we've been back.
Yeah, that's fair.
But I do feel like it is, it's a little bit, it's not as bad as it was.
Okay. Maybe June, yeah, as an action item going forward. So I'm going to expose myself a little bit. And the Friday updates, are we getting any COVID information on a weekly basis? Okay, okay. So if we can, if, some of that may be in there, and if we can add, if it's not already in there, the positivity rate week after week, I think that would be good as well. Okay, and then I will move on to one comment and one question. Final question is the one that Ms. Cortez forgot. So are we, Dr. Bedell, are we, so a kid shows up in school, they've got on terrible masks because they're irresponsible like Mr. Hogan is, and we are, they're not irresponsible, but you know, they don't have it, right? A mask, a quality mask. Are we giving them a quality mask to put on? Okay, awesome. All right, and then the final thing is really more of a point. So on the stress point, like I hear you, we're all, like particularly in the medical profession, but also in public education, everyone's super stressed. So I think maybe in a future update, we can get visibility into what are we doing about that, right? What are the specific actions the district's taking to help eliminate, or mitigate, or reduce some of the stress, right? Like very specifically, I think that'd be good for us to get some exposure to. So we're not expecting an answer today, we'll just take it as an action item, and then maybe we can, we can get an update on that. Are you okay with that, Dr. Bedell? So I mean, what you thinking?
Yeah, I mean, we talk about it, Dr. Willie comes up around all of the health awareness and the counseling and, I mean, we do a lot of that stuff, so I don't, we can just come back and give another update on what we're doing around wellbeing and awareness, but we do, we do a lot of that with our staff.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about things like, you know, massages or whatever the case may be, like what are we doing additionally other than providing, you know, EAP and wellness support? Are there other things? And if it's, if that is comprehensive enough, and the district feels like it is, understood. Just wanting us to continue to sort of be thinking about our team as this environment is super fluid and challenging for everyone, are there additional things that we can do to help make sure that the staff is feeling supported, et cetera? Again, not expecting a response today, we can talk about it offline as well if that's best. But I think we're good on this topic, so thank you guys, I really appreciate it. And Dr. Bedell, I think that moves us into the workshop presentation.
Right. Get used to using this. No, we just upgraded his mask. So we are going to move to our workshop presentation. We have Linda Quinley, who will present 4.3 on financial condition and activity, and then 4.4 on financial planning and budgeting. And then she will be followed by Shannon Jackson. We had to reschedule this one, 4.10 on repurposing. So Linda, we will pass it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Good evening, Board Chair Hogan, board members, and our listening public this evening. This is our annual opportunity to talk with you about how the administration monitors the obligations that we've made to you under Board Policies 4.3 and 4.4 around financial condition and planning. And so we will work through these. Okay, is that better? Thank you, thank you. Want the slide down on me. I'll do this. So 4.3 is, this policy really is about assurance that we don't create situations that produce fiscal jeopardy or material deviation from the expenditures. I thought maybe that was the thing to do. That take us away from the ends. And so the key measures that we use to this, you'll see them listed there, fund balance management, cash flow management, managing our debt in an appropriate manner, financial compliance audit policy, and then just regular reportings to you, which you know that every month you get an update of where we are. So looking briefly at a few of those KPIs and how we monitor them, on the left side of your screen here, you see a box or some data related to fund balance. You'll, you see two columns, one is all funds, and the other is the operating fund. I really believe that it's most important that all of us focus on the operating fund because that is what we operate. Number one, it's the majority of the budget. But number two, it's really what we live on day in and day out, it's how we pay our bills. The other bills are ancillary in nature, or the other funds are ancillary in nature. So you have a five-year history here with the current, most recent year of June 30, 2021, and you see that we ended last year with about 32% in reserves, and the five-year average is about 30% for all funds and just over 32 for the operating fund. As you well know, Board, and I think that our public is learning more and more, that looks like a lot of dollars when you look at it in cash, and it looks like a high percentage when you look at it as percentage. But it's really critical, we have solid fund balances on June 30th, these annual measures, because we're living off of those fund balances until our property tax revenues start coming in. And so it is an elevated amount of money, but necessary for a reason. And then right on the very bottom there, in case you don't remember, I've given you the formula for how fund balance is determined. So fund balance, if you're in the corporate sector or in your own life, is sort of net worth. And the way that we calculate the fund balance percentage is you take that dollar amount of net worth or. And the way that we calculate the fund balance percentage is you take that dollar amount of net worth or fund balance, and you divide it by your annual expenditures and transfers, and that tells you what percentage of your annual expenditures you're, you're holding in fund balance. And that's really what that fund balance percentage is. When we look to the right, another KPI is our cash and investment balances. We're showing you this as of December thirty-first, because that is a reporting requirement date for DESI. DESI likes to monitor to make sure the districts have made it from that June thirty mark until those property taxes start coming in. And the low point is really November, mid-November, because once those property tax bills come, go out, people do start paying their property taxes. And we'll see a little bit later kind of how we're doing on that this year. But you can see that our December fund balances dipped a little bit in eighteen and nineteen, and those were some tighter years around protest taxes and some things like that. This year, we have actually seen a really nice, um, early payment rate on property taxes. But it's important to know also that one of the reasons we have higher fund balance, and you've seen it as you look at the monthly treasures report, we have some areas that we are not spending, such as substitute teachers, because of lack of access to them, and even the fact that we've had so many openings throughout the year because of lack of human capital. So there are a couple of reasons that that number's a little higher this year. Our history and some context around indebtedness, as you well know, it was nineteen sixty-seven when Kansas City Public Schools last passed a GEO bond, so we do not have any outstanding general obligation debt. We do have six hundred million dollars of capacity, so were we to go to the bo- voters, we would have capacity of six hundred million dollars that by state statute, we could issue. But of course, we have zero outstanding against that. That's not to say we don't have debt. So there are some ways in which a school board can access debts without going to the voters. I refer to it as operating debt. We do have four series or four instruments of debt that have been issued, and you see them listed there, and their original dates and original amounts. Originally, it was about a hundred and thirteen million dollars of debt that was issued over those four issues. As of June thirtieth of this year, that balance of one thirteen is paid down to about eighty-two million dollars. We're, we're hitting that principal and interest you see to the far right. It's eight point two million for this year that comes out of our operating budget to repay that debt that we have on the books. So every year, when we set the budget, we specifically set aside a portion of our merchants and manufacturers' tax to repay that debt. And the real positive on this slide is that lowest number, you'll recall that in September, I believe it was, we closed a refinance on that twenty fifteen energy lease, that rate last year. The average remaining rate was three and a half percent, and we brought that down to two point one nine. So over the remaining life of that debt, we've saved almost a million dollars in interest. Financial compliance and audits, you see here, the last three years, we have had no federal financial compliance audits. That's not to say that we haven't had some minor state compliance audits. You know that we have, and we continue to work on those. But the most significant thing is when managing those large federal dollars, we've really had a solid, solid experience in our compliance efforts there. And I really want to commend the finance team and those who work with them on the CARES Act dollars, because last year, that was a really high compliance amount of money that came into the books with little guidance out of the gate, and a lot of rules by the time we got to the end of it. And so it was a real positive to make it through that federal audit. Other ways that we monitor policy and financial practice, there's a variety of them. You see them there. I won't necessarily talk to you about all of them. We do use MSBA's administrative policy. They write those for a variety of districts who are their members, with some, um, individual district ability to make adjustments if things are different for you. But they very much align those to state statute best practice, and so we use those on a regular basis. Really important, I think, is the fact that we do have our financial, um, information system, which you hear us call ALIO, because that's what it's called. We use those approval hierarchies in there, so for example, for example, Dr. Bedell's, um, assistant can put on a PO to buy new masks out of his budget, but she doesn't have the authority to approve that purchase order. That has to go through other levels. And when that purchase order gets to a certain amount of money, then other people like myself come into that approval process. And so we do have, um, a good security and hierarchy structure in that system. One of the things that I have found to be, um, sort of brave, because people like to protect their own, um, since my time here at Kansas City, is the number of times that we've reached out for external review from a variety of groups, and I know that we have a couple of those going on right now. So we do have the opportunity for different eyes on our processes and our systems. So future planning in this, in this area, we're, we are working currently with our external auditors on some modified process to make sure that those state minor compliance issues don't crop up again, and that we have some really solid practices in place. We, of course, are really thinking about what is an adequate and appropriate reserve as we go into the next couple of years, and we'll talk in a minute about some challenges there. But that's really important, being responsive to enrollment changes and statutory changes, and what that might mean for us from a, an income perspective. We want to make sure that everything we do puts a positive impact on a future general obligation bond issue, so that we get the highest quality credit rating we can achieve, and then therefore have the lowest possible interest rate that we can see. But I think one of the biggest things on here is to make sure we continue really utilizing those federal dollars through ESAR in a manner that really impacts achievements. I've said it before, and I will continue to say, I'm really proud of this district and how we have prioritized the use of that money for new innovative things that are good for students and staff, rather than propping up our budget, as a lot of districts have done across the nation, because it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. So our successes, um, to financial stability, we have leveled off enrollment declines. You know, we've implemented a finance committee, which gives us that opportunity to meet with a smaller group of the board and go deeper into some of these areas, get feedback from the board that helps us at a higher level than we've had in the chance. But also, I think that's two-way, and I think those board members, I hope, are finding a, a great opportunity, a great learning opportunity for themselves in that experience. We are pleased to have been able to accomplish that refinance. We do have healthy reserves, and we have had those high compliance marks that I mentioned earlier. So our timelines and action plans here, we are in, um, a critical season. We're winding, the audit is over, but that work is not done to make sure that anything we learned in that audit is ready to roll. So in, um, January and February both, we'll be talking to our finance committee about what those plans are. We've got the budget ahead to bring you, and then we do have that responsibility for the compliance reporting around SR two, which we hope is wrapping up this year. And in the, in the fall, then, we want to continue to bring the board and the community information related to facility needs and funding, as well as those future academic needs that Dr. Collier's going to talk to you about later in this month. Our barriers, um, we do anticipate right now that in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, roughly sixteen million dollars of revenues we receive today will transfer to charter schools based on the formula and the enrollment trends. It is a barrier that we've not had a dedicated funding stream for facilities since nineteen sixty-seven. And at this point in time, it's really uncertain in the state of Missouri whether or not they will appropriate the SR three funds. There, um, that decision has to be made by March twenty-fourth of this year, so we know it's going to be, be, be a big focus in the legislature. But we're watching it carefully because we do have plans that are significant to the future of KCPS specifically targeting those dollars. And then it's a lesser of a bear, that one has become my greater worry than this one, which was my previous worry. We are restricted in our access to SR three funds until SR two is fully expended and reported. That is a lot of, that's a big lift and a significant, um, piece of work for us. Questions on four point three?
Mr. Barca?
Thank you. I just clar- point of clarification, so on page twenty-eight barriers, so is that top bullet our MOU number?
That is not.
Oh.
That is not our MOU number.
Okay, so can you just do a little?
So that, so the MOU is about making sure that what the state has defined today, that charter schools earn in the way of state and local revenue, is shared with them. And we've, we've come into those MOUs to make sure that what the state says today, they should have, they get. So a lot of people refer to that as the cliff. This is specifically that as charter enrollments have risen, and ours have not, and, and have declined from prior, prior years, and that, um, that amount of money per, for, um, local revenue is higher, it really pushes that MOU amount way up. But it's not, it's not just the MOU, it's just in general, our revenues are going to go down and their revenues are going to go up next year.
I think this was the number that you showed us in one of the, that I think, I honestly lost it, yeah, okay. Okay. Um, I did have one other question. Okay, I can't find it right away, so go to Manny.
Thank you, Linda. I first have to give you kudos, because I think yesterday, you obviously know, I texted you when we were at DESI, and acknowledged you and your team's efforts to make sure we are financially sound as a district. It's one of the critical components that we achieve accreditation on, is that, um, that position financially. So kudos to you and your team, um, for, for having this amazing, um, operation set up. Uh, I want to ask a little bit about, um, as we prepare for budget, um, coming up, budget, um, processing, how we're doing on the educational component for the public, because I feel like although we have the policy monitoring component, we had talked about in finance, uh, and, and my colleague Rita has also made this a point, to, to creating something that shows the public how we spend our dollars, what those dollars are, where their property taxes go to, and I think this is a critical component as to be moving forward in the past.
Can we hold that one until we get through budget and planning, which is next?
Sure, sure, I'll, I'll hold that one.
It's a good one, that I didn't address in the slide, so I want to ask it, but yes.
The other component is, um, I, I think I want to make the point that, that you have made and make sure that the public hears this. This is the perfect balance of spend and save, right? And the reality of these dollars, um, you know, I, I think we all believe and have heard many times that, um, sadly, people have a deficit mind, a deficit spend mind, that we don't have dollars, and it's very critical for them to look at the budget and see there are money for things that are needed in classrooms. They go uncompletely spent, uh, and that we, we express that we do have dollars. Uh, we are using them appropriately. Uh, and these are tax dollars that we need people to pay so that we can complete, uh, the processes that we do here at the BOE. So the other component is I'm glad to see the investments from the energy and environmental efficiencies component, and love to see, I know you're working on things, uh, but I think that's a great way to spend and save, um, that, that has, you know, a triple bottom line in that component.
Okay, I don't, it sounds like, or it looks like we don't have any other questions. I would just say that, you know, on the, on Ms. Wolfie's point on the barrier, slide twenty-eight, that, you know, that first item just continues to reinforce one of the many reasons why the board is continuing to sort of apply pressure to the conversation around enrollment, right? This is literally our future at stake here, and, and nothing makes that more clear than you're just talking about one upcoming year, an additional cost to the district of sixteen million dollars, so we've just got to continue to focus on how do we go generate, um, additional kids into the system. Accreditation will help, but it's not going to help tomorrow, um, or even next year probably. It's going to take several years for that message to get out, and for people to understand and appreciate why that's important, and they should bring their families back. But, so not really a question, it's just one of those, like, we gotta keep focusing on the enrollment piece. So thanks for the presentation, Linda.
All right, moving on to four point four, which is the but, planning and budgeting piece, which Mr. Barco is ahead and ready to really get rolling on. So again, we're working here to make sure that our budgeting and planning don't deviate from those ends. Focus on what we're here for, and what those ends require us to do in a, in a multi-year planning method that doesn't put in the multiple jeopardy's. So our large ways to measure this are looking at those, the revenue over expenditures, how are we doing as compared to budget? What does that mid-year look like? Are we spending at a rate that is putting, um, resources in schools as needed? And then I think it's really important in this planning piece to look at that primary line of revenue, which is local property taxes, and what is it going to do, and what does it mean to the overall budget? So here is history and current information on the revenue over expenditures. That first column is the amount of money in each of those fiscal years that was revenues above expenditures that went into reserves. To the far right, then, you see what those total expenditures and transfers were, and you can see for twenty twenty-one, a little over nineteen million dollars, an incredibly high year last year, due largely to the fact that we were not in person for the majority of the school years. And so we had a significant amount of expenditures on things like transportation and substitute teachers and things like that, that were not expended. And then we got some federal dollars that were used to support some things. So that was a component of why that year was so high. You see that in the last two years, the total expenditures have risen, a little bit of that is related to those COVID dollars that came in, and then we had a reassessment year as well. Our target here, um, we really want to, you can see that in eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty, we hovered around four percent. We'd really like to see that final number be closer to within one percent of budget, because it's not our job to put money in the bank once you have adequate reserves, and we have adequate reserves. Our job is to invest those resources into students, into what's happening in the classroom year after year, and so we will continue to work to make sure that that's what's happening, and this, this is not our picture necessarily going forward. Here you see some information on the revenues, expenditures, and cash flow as of December. And so again, you're going to see the revenue received in the first column, and the expenditures made, and then that net year-to-date revenue over expenditures. I think what's really interesting about this historical trend slide is that you see in, um, at December of seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, we had in fact spent more than we had brought in. And this is net all funds, which makes it a little complicated. But in the last two years, we are ahead, and this year in particular, we are ahead, um, and there are a few reasons for that. But part of that relates to the fact that we do have a higher-than-normal collection rate on our property taxes as of the time we put this slide together. We'll look at that in a little more detail in a second. But we are underspending our budgets again this year because of lack of access to human capital and some other things. And so when you have open positions and you can't fill substitute positions, that is creating a savings that we are realizing in our cash flow position for the year. And here is that slide on our current property taxes. So you can see that the difference in the two years, and I think one of the most important numbers here is that third row down, the percentage of actual to budget. We've collected fifty percent of our budget as compared to forty-four last year, and historically closer to forty in previous years. So we are seeing a nice, more rapid collection rate. You can make a lot of assumptions around why that is happening, but that, that is what we are, are experiencing so far. This is important, because local property taxes cover over sixty percent of our total budget, and so that timely collection really makes life good. It also, if we see this as a continued trend, gives us a place to, um, push ourselves on being a little less conservative about our budget approach, um, assuming that we're going to actually have appropriate cash flows. So future planning here, we'll be talking next week with the finance committee around budget timelines and parameters for this year, and then bringing those to the board later. Mr. Gordon is working right now to engage a third-party compensation study related to not teacher compensation, but central office and administrative compensations that will help us with that efficiency planning going forward. We are working on multi-year enrollment goals and projections right now. Jesse's working on those. Blueprint twenty thirty does play into this long-range planning, because what you're going to hear from Dr. Collier later this month is very, very exciting, but it also, um, doesn't come at no cost, and so we've got a plan for that in this long-range plan. And then we'd like to continue to have conversations about a GEO bond or a mechanism for that dedicated funding stream for facilities. Successes, I guess I'm pretty happy about that refinance, because I listed it twice. Healthy, healthy reserve balances, I, that, I'm, I did like that, that was really fun. Um, healthy reserve balances are a real success for us, but again, something that, um, we have an obligation to manage and not, not over, not reach too high there. I think one of the successes in our budgeting and tim- timing and planning timelines is also that we have modified, with the collaboration and support of AFT, our Teachers and Classified Staff, um, Bargaining Group, to complete our salary negotiations prior to the completion of budgeting, where in the past, we've had those not necessarily line up. That will definitely make for a better and more succinct planning and budgeting inside the budget for our compensation, which is, as you know, one of the largest, the largest expenditure we have. Timelines and actions, those timelines that I talked about and guidelines. We are working to complete AFT negotiations by the end of February, so to what I just mentioned about one of our successes. And we have, um, we're working through the spring, we'll be coming with some central We'll be coming with some central office and other efficiencies to meet that sixteen million dollar adjustment that needs to be made next year so that we can get that final budget to you in June. Barriers, it's important enough to mention again, that sixteen million dollars that is staring us in the face for next year. That uncertainty around S R three and what that means to us as we budget and plan next year is really significant because we have some great programs and things established that need at least a second year of that S R support to continue. State legislation, we continue to watch, there are multiple bills filed around reducing our property tax incomes among other things, so those remain in really important to us. And again, I think it warrants that a barrier is that lack of dedicated funding stream for facility repairs. Already this year, we have exhausted our operating budget for repair and maintenance on heating and cooling and plumbing. And so, we're tapping into S R resources as other projects go unfunded and had already committed some funding for that. But our buildings are aging more rapidly because of their age and our systems are getting worse because of their age. And so, this does impact the operating budget. I mean, you can't, I mean, you know, we had a day that we had no school at Lincoln because the pods didn't have any heating. And if you got to see your Friday report, you got to see those, that piping system that was the reason for that. So, that's definitely a barrier for us.
Questions? We'll let her think through it, Mr. Barco.
Um, yes, thank you for this. Um, and again, kudos to all this amazing work um to get us to this financial point. The, you said we're doing the compensation study for administrative side. Um, where are we on teacher pay? And 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 what is it within our bounds as a board that we can do to increase teacher pay? Because I understand that nationally and even locally, um some boards are taking positions to increase pay, whether base or alternative incentive programs. So, um and not just that, right? We just talked about nurses and other folks. I mean, I think pay is an issue overall.
We've had an opportunity with the support of this board and the the boards that have been here since Dr. Bedell's been here to make some progresses in compensation. And he mentioned earlier that we really found a real challenge with recruiting and retaining security. And so, we worked really hard, dug deep and and made some improvements there last year. We were all really pleased about that. We've done the same with teachers, but we've not been able to get where we need to be. And I think we all know that. We are in the middle of negotiations right now, so I won't share with what where we are. But I, we've really, really worked hard on our teacher comp this year. I think you're going to be pleased. It's going to stretch us and challenge us in the budget. It means we have to figure out how to prioritize that administratively, right? We've got to find what it takes to do this because it's so important. We've, I'll share with you in the Friday update if it would be helpful. We've got a, we've got our comparisons start, middle, end to the peers around the area. Specifically, HR, um Dr. Collier has shared with me since we got here. We struggle to hire because of our starting pay, so we've really focused on that. They could go across the street to KCK and start five thousand dollars higher, six thousand dollars higher. We are narrowing that gap significantly without leaving behind our folks who have been here as well. But it doesn't stop there. And I actually was in a Missouri School Business Official Legislative Committee meeting today, and we were talking about um IGLS six nineteen that goes to the Senate Ways and Means tomorrow that stops increases in property tax um revenue for the next fifty years, personal property tax revenue for the next fifty years and the implication of that. And so, we we added in a bullet point for the Massa lobbyist who will be testifying on the behalf of all of us, that while no one likes a tax increase, it is a school board's best mechanism to be able to pay their teachers a competitive wage. And if the state of Missouri, there's every indication that the um, the formula is dead. There's no more money for the formula in the state of Missouri. The formula isn't going to provide resources. So, it means that locally, you have to come up with those resources, and that is property tax in the state of Missouri. So, capping that is an immediate hit on what we can do to attract and retain quality teachers. So, um, it's really, really critical.
One, I I couldn't agree more. I mean, whether you agree that property tax is the most equitable way to fund schools, it is the tool and mechanism in which we we need to function. Um, and without an alternative, it becomes very challenging. The component around S R dollars, right? What can we tell our parents or how can we as a board help support the district in making it clear to the state legislature that these are our dollars from the federal government that were designated for schools, that they need to stop trying to pigeonhole and move around money to keep it and and not spend it, right? I mean, how can we empower our parents to help us with that?
That's a great question, and it's one of the things that um Communications and I will be working on with those legislative alerts. We know that the the budget is going to be really one of the toughest battles for state legislature this year. They've already really acknowledged that themselves, that it's going to be a big push. They've got to deal with Medicaid, they've got to deal with the S R, whether or not they are going to appropriate and accept the S R dollars. So, I think that's going to be huge for our families to communicate with their senators and their reps around how important it is. I understand that this has to be paid back. This is federal debt that has to be repaid. But if Missouri doesn't accept it, it doesn't reduce that federal debt load. It doesn't reduce the fact, the burden that Missouri taxpayers have on paying that back. Um, it just gives that money to other states. So, it's going to be really important that we have our families have a simple understanding of that and push for why our children need that, why we need that in Kansas City Public Schools.
And Ms. Ms. Quinley, you're you're absolutely right. That money will just be distributed to other states. We still will have the burden. I believe in our meeting today with the superintendents that I I think I heard correctly in that meeting that we are the only state that has not, has not had a session to even appropriate S R three funds. Everybody else has.
That is correct. Everyone else has at least begun the conversation. There were about four states who weren't addressing it at all as a few months ago. But Missouri is, appears to be waiting to the very end.
Yep.
The feder- the federal government has set that March twenty-fourth deadline.
Ms. Cortez?
Sorry, I'm just writing myself a note. So, Ms. Quinley, talk, can you share with us a little bit about the thinking? On the one hand, we don't want to, we don't want to um disproportionately reserve funds.
Right.
Roll them into the reserves from not using them. We understand that there are stresses on human capital. And so, we, are we able in some fashion to reasonably project what our underspend is and is likely to be so that you have the tools to work with Dr. Bedell and the administration around where those areas in investment are? Whether they're, okay, if S R three doesn't happen, how do we continue certain new strategies? That's the worst use of those funds, in my opinion, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because that's what S R three is for. But if, let's let's play out, you know, are you playing out various scenarios so that those funds can still be used in this fiscal year? Or other things that the district needs, whether it's more money to building maintenance? You know, that's not sexy and frankly, it it's it's a tough one. But are there other things that could be additive? Or could be appropriate investments with those funds before they, you know, another ten or fifteen or twenty million dollars gets rolled into reserves?
That's a really great question, and it's a really important part of what we're doing right now. We, in fact, um, a small group of the leadership team, we have, I know they're excited, a hour and a half meeting scheduled for Friday morning so we can talk about that very topic. And Veronica Sarmiento from our budget team has done the projections of what budget, what what monies for salaries and benefits will not be spent because of either late hiring, because we struggled to fill positions or our inability to fill them completely. And so, by S R line, um, that's one point eight million dollars as of her work today. So, we know we have one point eight million dollars that we likely aren't going to spend of this year's allocation. So, how does that get put to use? What do we do with that? Human resources, asked today, um, I think through some prompting from Dr. Collier for buildings to have more of those permanent substitutes that we put in so that they know who's going to be in their building and we have that consistency and that relationship that's really, that is an example. I shared with you earlier that we have used our repair and maintenance budget for heating and cooling and plumbing. And to be honest, the plumbing repairs are directly related to COVID because those wipes are not flushable. And they do clog old pipes in Kansas City. And so, we we know we're going to have to put some more money into those because we can't not continue to make those repairs as we find them. But also, these monies are eligible for actual capital improvement. And so, to your point, that's not very exciting. But when you look at our nearly four hundred million dollars of deferred maintenance and the value to our community if we are able to use some of those monies to make those steps and reduce then our asks to them later when we get to a geo-bond, all of those things are in play. Dr. Bedell asked today for some laptops to have at the um, at each of our school buildings to make family enrollment at the building um an easier process. And so, that's S R eligible. So, we're really just scrapping around all of these things that we can find because we want to make sure we use that money, use it well.
I recognize there's no shortage of needs.
Nope.
And the question is, how do you, how do we make sure that we maximize our ability to to address those needs before we get to the end of the year and realize that we didn't use the funds?
Exactly.
Dr. Jones?
Just a couple of quick questions. The first is, um, just I want to, I think I heard this already a while ago, but wanted to make sure. Uh, we've already maxed out so that all classrooms have access to the enhanced filtration and the, I forget what they call that big cube in the middle that filters all the air. So, we're, we're good with that, is that, I think, speaking of S R funds and?
That's absolutely S R eligible work. Um, we are doing what we can with the systems we have. So, everywhere we can put in those higher control filtration systems we have. But to be honest, we have some systems that are so old that if you put in a really tight filtration, it clogs up, freezes up and destroys the system. And so, we've done it everywhere we can, we're continuing to do it. One of the things we want to do, and this is one of the reasons S R three is so important to us, we really focused S R two on teaching and learning, knowing we were putting off our major spend for those facility things until S R three. Right now, we have a forty million dollar S allocation to that specific line of work in S R three. And that's where we're really going to start finding that we get those systems where they need to be.
Okay, thank you. And the other um question is, is principal pay a part of the compensation study as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll give Mr. Barco the final question.
Um, I I just want to understand, just remind me if you could, the the allocation of S R dollars that we would be potentially receiving from the state? Because I feel like that amount of money is so large that even our business community in our chamber should be concerned about those dollars trickling down to us? And they need to play into this too.
Yeah, next, next year's allocation, I cannot remember the number off the top of my head, but it's it's between fifty and sixty million dollars.
Yeah, I I I know what it is.
Sixty?
I thought it was sixty-two.
It's sixty-some million dollars. We'll send you that exact number. So, it is significant to this community because just the forty million that we would use on the facility side, those are going to be local contractors. Those are going to be local employees getting really high-quality prevailing wage work. And to your earlier question that I asked you to put off, um, it is, one of the things we're going to talk about at the Finance Committee next week is engagement around the budget process, using this new tool that we have acquired and getting really deep into. School budgeting is not exciting for the community generally. And I know as as hard as you guys push, you, we still struggle with that. But in years where you're making reductions, you will see more engagement. And so, that tool, I think, is really going to help us as we get into that work.
And and Mr. Barco, we've been playing around with it too, so.
So, I guess I was technically honest. He did have the last question. Ms. Wolfie will have the last statement.
Well, I I, I'm going to be my broken record. Um, I feel like this is a great opportunity for us to engage our families and our parents and our community. This is an issue that they would have a very easy time. It, there is, you know, we got to simplify the message. I feel like this is a little bit more than a legislative advocacy update. This is a campaign because um, a lot of us here on the dais know we're going down for our first KCPS lobby day next Wednesday. But like, to me, this is a great, great, great opportunity for us to engage at a, you know, at a very high level. And and people will actually, I think they can feel, they'll see their ability to have an impact. So, I would really encourage us to um encourage Dr. Bedell and his team to come up with an actual campaign, campaign and plan around getting our community engaged in this advocacy effort.
All right, thank you, Ms. Quinley.
Okay, so our last item under the superintendent's report today is four-ten, repurposing. And Shannon Jackson is at the podium to present that to the board and the community.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update on our repurposing effort as well as to highlight some next steps. So, this site slide highlights some of, can you hear me? Is that better? Okay, thank you. June always looking out for me. This slide highlights some of the key things outlined in board policy that we strive to achieve in our effort to repurpose our closed school sites. Um, as I talk to neighborhoods and interested buyers, I always try to stress that the schools have served as community assets, not just providing education, but assessors of the neighborhood. And the repurposing effort strives to ensure that the sites continue to benefit the surrounding neighborhoods, even if they're not serving as schools. So, um, some background for folks that aren't as familiar. The repurposing office was created in two thousand and eleven after thirty sites were declared surplus as part of the rightsizing process. Board Policy four point ten was drafted in the first few months to provide more transparency and certainty uh for the community regarding the process and what types of reuses the board was open to considering. The policy was then updated um to its current form in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, here we have the current status of our surplus inventory. As you can see, over the last decade, we whittled that list of thirty surplus sites down to three that aren't under contract or sold. Last year, we started to also report out on our mothballed sites. So, these are buildings that are being held by KCPS for future school use. These ten sites have been declared mothballed for a variety of reasons. Either they share a site with an open school, so we want to make sure that we're not um selling to an entity that's not a compatible use with an open school or that we see a future use for either the building or the site. You can see from this slide why we've started reporting out on the mothballed sites as they account for more than ninety percent of the carrying costs of our closed school sites. Last fiscal year, our closed schools had around one million dollar financial impact on our budget. This doesn't account for all of the associated costs because not all repair and security costs are allocated specifically to sites, although that's something that Linda's team is really working on. Um, in a few slides, uh, we'll revisit the implication of these costs. I would like to share a few successes um from two thousand and twenty-one. While we do have statutory requirements that we have to follow regarding the disposition of surplus property, the current board policy does encourage the use of non-traditional disposition strategies. And we've employ- employed these a few times, um specifically with nonprofit uses or things that we think truly are serving the community need. One I'll highlight, in two thousand and sixteen, we entered into a lease with an option to purchase for the Dunbar site um with the Carousel Adult Day Care Center. The founder, um, a black woman, um, run. She wasn't comfortable taking on additional debt for the acquisition of the property. She wanted to really uh focus that in on improvements. And so, doing the lease with the option to purchase enabled her to do that. And when the lease term expired uh in two thousand and twenty-one, she exercised her option to purchase, and we closed on that sale in April of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, we've also worked to expand our outreach efforts um at the pushing of this board and community members. And we have seen some uh improvements in participation from folks who who wouldn't have otherwise. So, so that's something that that we're pleased about, and thank you for your support in that. For for folks in the community uh who may not be as familiar with repurposing, I do want to share, um, we've received um a lot of commendations over the years, especially in those early years. There are a lot of school districts that had a lot of closed school sites. They didn't have transparent processes. People didn't really understand what boards were open to, not open to. That's something that we really. That's something that we really worked to address with our effort. And while we've really focused on that, we can always improve. Oh, no, not yet. Um, and so, we're really looking to continue exploring strategies to increase, um, meaningful participation from our community members. One thing that has been hard over the years, um, we all know Nicole Collier-White and how wonderful she is. She originally led our community outreach efforts before she went on to do more amazing things for the school district. And so, we've tried to absorb those duties while also taking on more planning and project management duties. And so, we have been more reactive at times than proactive. And so, this is something that, uh, going into the, end of the school year into next is something that we hope to, um, to be more proactive. Have you seen, we've been reporting out, um, on some things that we've, we've been trying to do on that. We have been stymied, um, from finding strong interim reuses for sites. We'd hoped that would help reduce our holding costs as well as the occurrence of vandalism. One of those challenges relates to building up, uh, building code upgrades that are required when there is a change of use. So, I'll, I'll give an example. When KCNA did facility improvements at that site, they were grandfathered in from doing all the building code upgrades because they were still in, in educational school use. But when we tried to work with the city at the end of last, so, end of 2020, to create a temporary shelter, um, that change in reuse was going to trigger a building code upgrade that essentially made that project financially unfeasible. So, so these are things that we have learned as we've gone along. It's something, as I talk to colleagues in other communities, they're facing the same thing. It's that we've got to figure this out because that has then potentially created vandalism and disrepair for, for closed sites when we don't have as much opportunity to do those interim uses. Um, this is a slide from our report last year. And I would say, all these takeaways are still valid. I want to highlight the first bullet under next steps. Because we have mothballed sites, more mothballed sites than we need to accommodate, um, enrollment trends, as well as the significant holding costs that I highlighted before, um, we've recently conducted an assessment, an inventory assessment of all of our closed school sites. This is the list of sites that we evaluated. And then, these are the criteria that we looked at as part of that evaluation. Based on that assessment, um, these are our, uh, initial recommendations. Um, as you can see, we're recommending that three sites be moved from mothballed status to surplus, which would make them candidates for sale. Five sites, all of which they're currently on the mothballed list, we are recommending that we wait until Blueprint 2030 is complete before finalizing recommendations and bringing any other proposed changes. For Sixth Grade Center and Delano, we are recommending that they stay on the mothballed list. For the Sixth Grade Center, we're recommending that we proceed with demolition. So, it's essentially holding that site so that it can be used to, to better serve that Southeast High and AC Prep campus, provide more facilities there. And then, for Delano, staying on the mothballed list, but currently it hasn't listed as a demolition candidate. So, we'd like to remove that component and continue exploring the feasibility of renovating it for a youth shelter and youth transitional housing. I think you've received, uh, in your packet, I'm not sure you've had a chance to look at it yet, that inventory assessment report. But once you have had a chance to review it and we've been able to answer your questions, we are recommending that the board adopt a resolution declaring the KCNA site to the former Wendell Phillips School Site, King Weeks, and Skerritt Sites as surplus. That would essentially trigger the repurposing process. And we recommend before we, we really dive into that, exploring for the sites whether or not there's any other public benefit priorities that we want to highlight. So, these would be things like affordable housing, priorities for partner agencies. These are things that we talked about with the board back in 2011 when we started this. But that's something that we, we would suggest doing again. And then, also exploring if we want to make any changes to the repurposing process or the engagement process itself. Um, we've been using the same process for about 10 years, and we did that based off of best practice. Are there things that we want to do differently? And, and explore those. And then, obviously, update administrative policy to reflect those changes. That concludes my update, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jaxx. Ms. Ford?
Very quick question. Um, can you just make it clear to me, um, just the importance of the classification or distinction as surplus? Like, what is that process about? Like, why do we need to do that? For me and then just for anyone else?
State, state statute requires, um, that if we're going to, uh, sell or lease, long-term lease, a site, that it needs to be declared surplus by the board. So, essentially so that staff can't just go out and do something on their own. You do have to have that board vote declaring surplus. It's also why we always reiterate that in, um, the board motions when we do sell property, so that you have that additional clarity around that piece. Thank you.
Ms. Woolsey?
I just want to ask a point of clarification on the future planning action items under the third bullet. So, when you talk about the engagement process there, that's related to this repurposing, not the Ed Collab engagement process?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Buckner?
Um, I just have a, um, clarifying question on remain, on the, um, closed school inventory recommendation slide, um, where it says remain on mothballed list. The Sixth Grade Center, it says proceed with demolition, demolition. Um, is, are you saying that it stays on mothballed, mothballed, but it is going to be demolished?
Correct. So, it would remain on the mothballed list so that we would be holding on to the land long-term? Because it is essentially looked at as part of that campus that Southeast and AC Prep share.
Got it. And then, um, another question on slide 46, on page 46, it says barriers, policy, legislative, financial. Um, are we running into this issue with, um, the building code upgrade requirements frequently? I mean, is this something that you foresee being an issue or it has been an issue?
So, it, uh, it has been an issue for our sites that are still in good enough condition that they could be leased. So, for example, the, the three sites that were closed in 2016, Southwest, Page, and, um, the former Wendell Phillips site, now KCNA. Those were, we, we clearly in our master plan recommendations had said for Southwest and Page in order to reduce the impact of vandalism, keep positive activity there, that we wanted to proactively look at leases. Well, this is more challenging, um, one with the building code piece, but also, um, we've also identified challenges with people just wanting, you know, the library or a, a component that it is, it is very difficult and administratively cumbersome to, um, lease just a small portion of a very large building that doesn't have systems, controls necessarily, that you can just isolate one piece. So, the building code upgrades are one piece, but not the, the only piece to that. Thank you.
Mr. Barker?
Um, Shannon, you've done an incredible job, um, with repurposing from the beginning of your involvement with this. And I know we've been on opposite sides, literally, um, of this discussion in several situations. But the reality of what the task you were handed, um, truly, you have done an incredible job with that. So, I want you to know that, um, from me. I think my, my question around, um, the, the changes to the process and engagement, I think, um, I want to reiterate the importance of probably renewed positioning on some of this, right? Because I think communities oftentimes reflect on the vacant building and see it as a detriment and not look towards the opportunities that could exist there. Um, and, and maybe it's, um, because we have so few in this system now compared to when you started this process, maybe a campaign to re-expose people to this? And, and say, you know, what are your creative ideas, uh, around these things? And, and whether that's a, a walkthrough, which usually are terrible, um, having done a couple of them now, or just an invitation to dream, I think that would be an amazing, uh, community engagement practice that could reinvigorate, uh, the exposure of our sites. Uh, because these are prime locations in our communities, and there is so much opportunity. Every time I see a vacant building, I think nine other things could be here. Um, and, and maybe it is in the building that exists, and maybe it's not.
No, I think it's a, that's a very good point. It is something that we had put on the next steps on the slide that we gave last year, um, that we have done in some cases, but not at all of them. And I think that that's something that, that has to be prioritized, um, going forward.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jaxx.
Thank you.
And Dr. Bedell, I believe that concludes your Superintendent's Report, correct?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chair.
All right, well, so we'll move over to the Board Chair Report. And we are going to allow the board to reflect on accreditation. So, we're going to, you know, do some additional celebrate. I'm assuming people will celebrate. I can't imagine a board member will bring something like, oh, it was terrible that we got fully accredited. Um, you're right. That said, this will, well, anyway, I'll let people chime in. So, I don't know if a particular person wants to start, or, Ms. Cortez?
Because I'm so shy. You know, I, I, I really, I'm not sure that there are enough ways or times to say thank you to every person who has been part of this journey for, I mean, at least the last 22 years, but really throughout my lifetime. I had lots and lots of people reach out in the last two days saying, what does this mean? What does this mean? And I said, it means come work with us, right? Come in. That you didn't need accreditation to be here, but this is just another invitation in the journey. And, um, I, I think people, you know, so much of the community doesn't recognize how much happens every day in each of your departments, with each of your teams, with, with each of our kids and families. But if we said thank you every minute of every day for the next month, it wouldn't be enough. So, truly, um, your efforts are appreciated. And I'm, and I'm not just speaking to the people in the room. You, you represent a very large category of faculty and staff from so many dimensions. But truly, thank you.
Here, here. Dr. Jones?
Yes, I want to echo, uh, my colleague, Ms. Cortez, as well as, you know, Dr. Bedell, Nate, everybody who's commented. I'm extremely happy and just really grateful for the team to make this happen. I know y'all spent a lot of wait, you know, hours late into the night trying to get to this, and so, I appreciate it. I also want to give a shout out to the parents, the families that have been a part of this district for those 20 years plus where there was no accreditation. So, families have continued to choose this district when obviously they had plenty of options. So, for all the families that are listening, who show up into our schools every day, you bring your kids, you bring your voice, you bring your advocacy, you bring your emails that you send us because you care so much. And you want what's best for your kid, but also the rest of the kids. Thank you for sticking with this district. Um, thank you for rocking with us. Thank you for believing and having hope. So, just want to make sure that folks feel, um, you know, appreciated in that note. Because without those families, without all the families, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be here. So, thanks, thanks for all of that.
Amen. Ms. Ford?
Sure. New, new board member here, going to chime in. Uh, I know that, um, everything that, um, happened yesterday in celebration, has been a journey long before I ever stepped on the board. And so, I just wanted to take the moment to acknowledge all the people over the last 20-plus years that made, uh, this moment, uh, possible. Uh, and just wanted to take the time to, to celebrate you, those that are in this room, um, those that are working in all the different departments, those who have moved on. Just wanting to take the moment to just sit here and acknowledge, uh, from my seat. I know that I am new to being a board member, but I've been able to work with students from this district for many years, most of my career, uh, actually. And so, I was able to reflect yesterday on just the students that I was able to work with over the years. Many of them who felt like the best decision for them and their family was to leave the district. And then, on the flip side, all of those thousands of students that decided to stay and those families that decided to stay. And also, all of the community members and advocates and champions over the years that have also continued to support, uh, the district. I think this is a moment and a W for them as well. Uh, and I also wanted to just shout you out, Dr. Bedell. I know I've texted you a couple of times just to say congratulations. And what I appreciate the most about your response and that I've also heard from your team has been, yes, we celebrate, and we got so much work to do. So, I appreciate, um, both of those. We need to celebrate the moment. It's a, it's a great moment. It's long overdue, and there's so much that we have to accomplish. Um, I really, really appreciate, uh, that response. It's something that definitely led me to want to be a school board member and something that I look forward to just being able to be a part of. So, that's all I have to say.
Awesome. Mr. Barker?
Obviously echo everything and everything to be said in the future that's still coming. But I, I think it's important for the public to understand something that I don't think, Nate, Jennifer, and I got to experience, but have certainly heard about, um, since the decision was made by Desi, right? Um, when, when the decision was made, although you couldn't see us doing it, having the discussion, uh, it is my understanding that within the Board of Education building, there was a roar. Um, and, and I'm hopeful for the security footage, uh, that would show us that roar. But I think that roar is indicative of the commitment of everyone in this district. And I'm sure that roar probably spread throughout our buildings. But it, it shows the commitment of the people who are here and why they're here, right? Uh, and I think no matter what and who you talk to, and I, I've watched literally the word and the verbiage change of acknowledging everyone from custodial staff to teachers to administrators, this is a victory for literally everyone who has KCPS in their mouth, um, who has worked, who has labored, literally everyone, the community, um, the people who are going to move to Kansas City, everyone. Uh, because it is such a big and momentous accomplishment of everyone who have played into this. So, cheers to that moment and a renewed reminder that now this is going to uncuff our wings. And truly, this is the base of where we're going as a district.
Here, here. Ms. Buckner?
So, I don't know if I have anything of substance to say behind all of my well-spoken colleagues. But, um, I will say that it is an honor to sit, um, to serve, um, this district. Um, I also received a lot of phone calls and text messages. And like Ms. Ford, I am new and can't take any credit for any of it. But I do sit here with a sense of pride to know that I am a part of, um, a district that it has a legacy of resilience and hard-working people, um, students, um, and families. And so, I just want to say thank you, and the work continues.
So, I, I just want to make, I just want to make one additional point. So, to Ms. Ford and Ms. Buckner, while, you know, you're, you're going on your one-year anniversary here, know that, like, you guys are already and will continue to play an incredibly important role in making sure that we continue to stay fully accredited and that we go above and beyond what accreditation means. So, don't, don't undervalue the work that you guys are doing and the, 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 just the value that you add, um, to this board, to this district, and, and ultimately to the city. Uh, Ms. Woolsey?
Thank you. I have actually a prepared statement, but before I say that, I think I just want to share, um, one, my thanks. You, I, Team KCPS, you know how much I love you, whether or not that was pre-Dr. Bedell. You know, now with Dr. Bedell and his team. But I will just say personally, yesterday, I did not realize, and I, I wonder how many others inside this district, um, felt the same way as I did yesterday, how much I was holding back, um, that I couldn't, there was something I just couldn't, um, get to. And I had expressed this to Chairman Hogan before we got down there. And I said, I just can't, I don't know why I'm having a hard time embracing this. And it was, I think, this protective thing that we do as humans that I couldn't let myself get there because I was afraid, once again, that we'd be let down. And I will tell you, when they announced a silly board item agenda, I just unleashed, and it was crazy, and it was cath- and it was crazy, and it was cathartic, and it was wonderful, and I looked over, and Dr. Collier was having pretty much the same moment. And I thought, wow, that was a lot that I was holding back. And I thought immediately of every single one of you. You've all felt that way for over 11 years. And to have that release, I had the best sleep of my life last night. And I woke up, I woke up the old way, where I was re-energized, I was excited, just like you said, I'm ready to get back doing the stuff we've got to do now that we're on the floor. So, I just wanted to say, for all those listening and all those that have been holding your breath, you know, I hope that you got the same release that I did yesterday. I'd also like to read something if you would allow me to. "Like my colleagues, I want to recognize the hard work put in by our teachers, school staff, principals, vice principals, district staff, and administration. But I also want to take a moment to say thanks to those individuals and groups who, without their Herculean efforts over the last 11 years, KCPS would not have had the opportunity to do the work to see yesterday come to fruition. It is also because of these true believers and warriors of public education, and you know who you are, that we still have an elected school board governing Kansas City Public Schools. You see, without their tireless efforts, we could not have become a district, or we could have become a district run by a mayoral-appointed board with a CEO superintendent, or a system of schools run by a nonprofit harbor master. Most of those efforts were led by outsiders who claimed to know what Kansas City Public Schools needs to do in order to improve our schools. I believe yesterday demonstrates that we are fully capable of handling the responsibility of that directive. Believe me, we would love nothing more than to be able to focus solely on educating the children of Kansas City Public Schools, but year after year, we were forced to redirect time and energy away from those efforts to defend public education from those who seek to privatize it. Please know that all are welcome to use their voice as a part of our beloved school community when they come in the spirit of staying focused on what is best for students. But hear my plea, that we will remain ever vigilant of the public governance of the Kansas City Public Schools. Thank you."
All right. All right. So, I think, Dr. Bedell, I'm going to let you talk about, just real quick, a spring celebration, something that I'm sure the Kansas City Star Editorial Board will be super excited to hear about, that we're going to continue to celebrate.
Mr. Chair, because we know that we weren't able to make the announcement or even do the press conference in front of our 22 to 300 to 500 faculty and staff members, it is our full intention to work with some partners to plan a celebration during the spring where we can be outside in open space and celebrate and enjoy each other's company. So, I do want our faculty and staff, our teachers, everybody that's a part of the system to know that we're planning a really nice event to celebrate all of you that's in this organization. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Because I like a great segue, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wolsey to read a resolution from the Kansas City Public School Board in response to the Star's editorial pieces.
Thank you, Chairman Hogan. As a board, again, we're excited to be able to celebrate this historic moment of accreditation and want to recognize the hard work and dedication of Team KCPS, past and present, that has enabled us to reach this point. While we know accreditation is an important milestone validating we are on the right path, it is not the final destination of our journey. As we know, and we know as a board, it is our duty to provide clear leadership, stability, and strong governance in order to maintain steady progress. The data clearly shows our students are growing academically. The next steps are to build on the foundation of accreditation and continue improving in all aspects of the KCPS student experience. We owe every family that chooses KCPS a quality experience, and owe our kids the opportunity to grow and develop the skills necessary to thrive in adulthood. As we continue to work toward that commitment, it is for the benefit of all kids within Kansas City. Unfortunately, narratives that focus on time-worn tropes, such as the recent Star Editorial, only serve to undervalue the kids and families attending KCPS. We must learn from the history of our city and district and do better. Rather than revert back to racial lines that have divided this community for generations, it's time to recognize Kansas City Public Schools for what it is, an accredited, financially sound school district with a stable superintendent and board leadership focused on closing opportunity gaps for all students it serves. We know we have work to do to provide the quality of education and experiences we seek for every child in Kansas City Public Schools, but we cannot do it alone. We need our city to support us in addressing the barriers our students experience in their daily lives. We need our community to think before repeating damaging narratives that no longer represent the current trajectory of Kansas City Public Schools. We need a community willing to hold us accountable while holding us up or while helping us rise to the challenge. We have a responsibility to our city, our community, and most of all, to our students.
Thank you, Ms. Wolsey. All right. We'll transition over to June to review our new action items.
So, I've captured two, maybe three items. The average positivity rate by week to be added to the Friday update. There was a request regarding the stress level of the staff and students. What is the district doing to mitigate the stress levels of staff and students? That there would be an answer for that one. And then the last one I put down was for Ms. Quinley, who said that she would share in the Friday update the compensation discussion.
Ms. Quinley, I think we want some, can we include some additional clarity in that? I think you know what you want. I just want to make sure that everyone knows what you want. Unless you're just, or what you're going to provide, unless you're just going to provide it yourself.
I was offering to provide our comparative salary data for teachers for the board to consume. If there's something else you need. I was going to offer the comparative salary data for the board. But to Mr. Abarkah's question about what can you do as a board, I think that just helps you process that a little bit.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Dr. Bedell, anything else from superintendent, board, you're good? Dr. Bedell wants to get some food, so we're adjourned.